Michelle, I just have an opening comment to get us started. Thank you all for joining to hear our overview of our draft application to the Centers for Medicare and Medicaid for our Medicaid Transformation Project or 1115 waiver application. This is a formal federal process to hold public hearings for the next thirty days and gather feedback and refine the application draft so that we can submit it this summer to CMS. So we are excited that you're joining us and interested in hearing about this work. And we look forward to your questions and comments and your active engagement in helping us refine this product. So with that, I think I turn it back to Michelle to, if you have additional comments, you wanted to set the framework, Michelle.
Thank you very much, Michelle. All right, next slide. First, we'll just do some quick housekeeping. Some of you may be new to Zoom. So we are recording today's webinar. And so that means at this time, you know, we've muted all attendees, which means that you can hear us, but we can't hear you yet. There'll be a time at the end for Q. Encourage you to submit your questions and comments through the chat function. And you can do this during any part of the presentation. And if you wish to verbally share your input, and we welcome that as well, please just raise your hand using the raise hand function. And we'll call on you during the Q and A. And the raise hand function is under the reactions section of all those fun Zoom gadgets that we have. So today, we've turned on closed captioning for all attendees, but you might not see it on your end. So if you want closed captioning, please enable the live caption button that's at the very bottom of your screen. And if you can't see it, if you go to the three dots and open that up, there's an option there. Or if you just expand your screen completely, it'll be at the bottom and it's called live caption. So the slide deck is available right now on our MTP renewal page. And we'll be posting the recording from today's hearing and all the other hearings on the same page. And it takes about a week or so after, after the public hearing to post. My next slide, please. All right, so let's go through today's presenters. Y'all just heard from Michelle Needham, and she's the Chief Policy Officer for Healthcare Authority or HCA. We'll also hear from Michael Arnis, and he's the Deputy Chief Policy Officer at HCA. We'll also hear from Bea Rector, and she is an interim Assistant Secretary for the Aging and Long Term Support Administration, known as ALSET, and that is within the Department of Social and Health Services or DSHS. We will also hear from Chase Napier, and he is our Medicaid Transformation Manager at HCA. And my name is Rochelle Alangi. I'm kind of the moderator for today. And I'll be kind of taking you through a few slides and handling the Q and A part when we come to it. And I'm the Policy Communications Manager at HCA. Next slide, please. I also want to acknowledge and thank everyone for attending. We also have some behind the scene folks that are driving the presentation, making the technology work. So Gabby and Sagoon and Tamara, thank you so much. And also wanted to thank all of our subject matter experts who were not presenting, but are also very intimately involved and know these programs very well that they're with us too. So thank you to everybody for making this happen. This is very much a group effort. So today, just a quick, quick look through the agenda. We're going to be doing a Medicaid overview and also an overview of the Medicaid Transformation Project. You'll also hear it called MTP and talking about the waiver renewal. We're going to go through a deeper dive and discuss the goals of the waiver and then also cover the programs that will be continuing, expanding, or beginning in the renewal. And last but not least, we'll have some time for Q and A. And I'll also share some other alternatives for sharing public comments and resources and ways that you can get ahold of us. Next slide, please. All right, Michael, I'm going to punt it to you.
Thanks, Rochelle. Good afternoon, everybody. A bit about Medicaid, it's a federal program and each state administers the Medicaid program. Apple Health is what we call our program. We cover about two million people. And the federal government pays for the program, also creates the rules for how the program works. And so a state must apply to the feds for Medicaid demonstration waiver if we want to change some of those normal Medicaid guidelines. And we did that back in 2017, and that's the waiver that we are currently under. And it's called the Medicaid Transformation Project. So on the next slide is the MTP renewal. So what we are up to now is we want to continue the Medicaid Transformation Project. And so we are submitting for a five-year waiver renewal. And we have three important aims that we talked about a year ago. One is to ensure equitable access to whole person care, empowering people to achieve their optimal health and wellbeing in the setting of their choice, to build healthier equitable communities with communities and to pay for integrated health and equitable value-based care. As you can see, equitable or equity is in each statement because we want to emphasize an equitable lens in all of our programs. And we also have a specific program for equity. On the next slide, we're going to go into our goals. And what we've decided to do with this particular waiver renewal is to set three goals and to lump our new policies and programs under those goals. So the first one is to expand coverage and access, ensure people get the care they need. And then to advance whole person primary preventive and home community-based care, home community-based care with our partners at the Department of Social and Health Services. And we want to continue to accelerate care delivery and payment innovation focused on health-related social needs. And that last one takes off on some of the work that we are doing now with accountable communities of health and managed care organizations in the communities. So if I could go to the next slide, this is our deeper dive into goal one. And this is expanding coverage and access to care and ensuring people can get the care that they need. So we can go to the next slide. So this will be the expanding coverage and access. And we have two programs that were directed to us from the legislature. And the first is continuous Apple Health enrollment for children up to age six. And this would allow us to retain coverage and not have those coverage gaps for the children of the state. The next that was directed by the legislature is reentry coverage. And these are for services that would occur after incarceration. And this program is necessary because at release, we are truly losing people as they re-enter the community. We want to make sure that they have Medicaid coverage at that time. And to make sure that we have a transition period thirty days before release. And we need to request that ability from our federal partners to prepare for that release and to make sure that we have programs and coverage available at that time. On the next slide, we're going to continue with another project that was a program that was directed by our legislature. And this is to expand postpartum care. And this is for pregnant individuals or people who are twelve months after the pregnancy ends. And right now, that coverage is for two years. And we want to make sure that we can retain that coverage for up to twelve months regardless of citizenship status. And then we want to continue one of the, or two of the programs that began under the current waiver. And this is to provide substance use disorder treatment. And this would allow Washington to use federal money for mental health as well as substance use treatment in facilities and for that inpatient care. So this just builds out and provides federal monies to pay for those inpatient services for substance use and for mental health services. And this is a continuation of the program that we have going today. On the next slide, we start into a deeper dive into goal number two. And let me go on to the next one and introduce this to you, Bea.
I am here. I'm sorry. I'm just trying to find the right buttons. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much, Michael. Good afternoon. My name is Bea Rector. And as Rochelle explained at the top of the webinar, I am the interim Assistant Secretary at the Department of Social and Health Services Aging and Long Term Support Administration. And we've been very honored to work together with the state Medicaid Agency Healthcare Authority on this 1115 waiver. We are asking to be able to continue what was known as Initiative Two in the original waiver, which is offering long-term services and supports to the state's aging population of individuals without caregivers, as well as wrapping caregiver support around those who have an unpaid family caregiver. We do that through two different programs. One is called the Medicaid Alternative Care. And the second is the Tailored Supports for Older Adults. During the first five and a half years of our existing waiver, we've served about thirteen thousand unduplicated individuals, clients in the service delivery system. And that number does not include the unpaid family caregivers who have received supports as well. And any given month, we're serving about four thousand six hundred people with these services. So we want to continue those really valuable services that delay and divert people from having to spend down and impoverish themselves to qualify for Medicaid-funded, long-term services and supports. In addition, in this new application or this renewal application, we are looking for four new flexibilities. And those really have to do with supporting individuals who are currently living in an institution. That could be a state psychiatric hospital, that could be an acute hospital, a nursing facility, who really need the level of guardianship support for decision-making that would allow them an opportunity to be able to transition out of that institutional setting and live in the community. And we would need CMS supports to be able to use Medicaid dollars to pay guardianship fees for that type of support. We also know that to qualify for long-term services and supports under Medicaid in the community, people have to first complete a functional assessment and a financial assessment, and that takes time. And that time results in a delay in people's ability to be able to get the services they need quickly. So we are asking CMS for the flexibility to do a brief screening of functional and financial eligibility. And based on that brief screening, be able to immediately begin the process of putting services in place while we do full eligibility. That would really make sure that eligibility for community is on par with eligibility for nursing facilities under Medicaid. We also know that increasingly, people live in settings in close proximity to one another. That could be an apartment building, that could be a mobile home park. And currently, the way that the Medicaid rules dictate the delivery of personal care services, it's very one-on-one in nature. And it really doesn't allow the kinds of flexibilities that clients want to be able to pool hours, to be able to have on-demand services from a team of personal care aides. And that would benefit both the client, but it would also benefit the direct care workers to be able to work in a team model, to get that kind of mentoring support and to be able to work together to meet a group of clients' needs. So we're asking for some flexibilities there. And finally, we know that we live in a state that's very expensive from a housing perspective. And the incidence of homelessness due to the inability to pay rent is really increasing, particularly amongst the older adult population that is on a fixed income. So what we are looking for is to get approval from Medicaid to be able to pay for short-term rental subsidies that would allow individuals to move out of a nursing facility, move out of a state hospital or an acute hospital, and get that rental assistance while they're on wait lists for more permanent subsidized housing. So that's what we're looking for. We're super excited about the potential of really expanding how we serve people in the community. And with that, I am going to turn it back to Chase.
Thanks, Bea. We can go to the next slide here. So thanks for the opportunity today. So I wanted to cover just one more strategy under goal two that we're supporting in the renewal application. And that is really to advance our work on integrating physical and behavioral health. Under the current renewal, we have focused on integrated care through our delivery system reform work. We've done some integration assessment work. But really, we see a lot of additional work and opportunities there. And so in our renewal, we're including a relaunch of standardized integration assessment process that would include a standard tool that physical and behavioral health providers would use. We would also be providing technical assistance on the use of the tool. And in addition, we're also looking at how to support engagement through incentives, how to support progress through some targeted incentives and also practice coaching. So not just the technical assistance on the use of the tool and the process, but also based on the results, how are we supporting providers to continue progressing along the continuum of integration? So a really important body of work that's going to continue. But like I said, we are really relaunching, so to speak, with a standardized integration assessment tool known as the Washington Integrated Care Assessment. Let's go to the next slide here, and this takes us to goal three. So we're going to spend some time really talking about how we want to accelerate care delivery and payment innovation. And this is a big focus on health-related social needs and ties into the focus on health equity that Michael mentioned at the very beginning. Next slide. All right, so meeting health-related social needs. Under this renewal, we're introducing a new program called Taking Action for Healthier Communities, also known as TALK. And this will be really about health supports beyond clinical care. So goal two, address a lot of the focus on whole person care, home and community-based care and integrated care. This is now looking kind of beyond, beyond those care settings to address health-related services, to address health equity investments, and also to build capacity through community hubs, native hub, and community-based workforce. And then we will do this through partnerships. And this will be across several state agencies. HCA is the lead on the Medicaid Transformation Project renewal, but really a partnership across HCA, DSHS, Department of Health and others. And we'll be working closely with accountable communities of health, continuing our partnership with the nine regional ACHs. Of course, working closely with managed care organizations, working closely with tribes and Indian healthcare providers and other partners, a lot of community partners are going to be involved, building on the relationships that tribes, managed organizations, ACHs have with community providers, community-based organizations, and community members. Next slide, please. So first, we have to start with what's really working well today. So in terms of addressing health-related social needs, we want to continue the important work within the foundational community supports program. And I think most of you likely know about the foundational community supports or FCS program. But if not, I'll highlight that the FCS program provides supportive housing and supportive employment services to the state's most vulnerable Medicaid beneficiaries, those with complex care needs. FCS does not currently pay for housing wages or wage enhancements. We are proposing two enhancements, so policy enhancements to the program based on what we've learned today. And so under the renewal, we are seeking authority for FCS to pay for one-time transition costs. For example, application fees and basic home goods, first and last month's rent for certain enrollees. So based on some criteria. And then also the renewal would seek to expand FCS eligibility. This would be to expand to cover those exiting a correctional facility and also for those eighteen, sorry, sixteen years and older. So expanded eligibility. Let's go to the next slide here. And so now I'll talk about some new strategies that we're proposing in the renewal. We want to address health-related services, so similar to foundational community supports, but looking at other opportunities, other unmet social needs that can be addressed through what we're calling health-related services or HRS. And the first real area of emphasis is to use in lieu of services authority. And this is existing managed care authority that we can use, referred to as ILOS or in lieu of services. So what these are, these in lieu of services are alternatives to clinical care, basically state-covered, state plan-covered benefits. So alternatives to those clinical state-covered plan benefits that are considered medically appropriate alternatives and cost-effective alternatives. So for example, removing carpet in the home of someone with asthma. So if the condition of the carpet is actually exacerbating the asthma, we first have, no, we have to, you know, address the root cause there. And so that's an example of something that typically wouldn't be, you know, a state plan-covered service, but really necessary and an appropriate alternative service. So ILOS services are offered under Managed Care Authority. There are examples of this today, so we acknowledge that. And that really kind of sets some of the foundation for, you know, building upon what's working and expanding the use of in lieu of services. We want to do whatever we can to make it easier for managed care organizations to utilize this authority. So we're looking at how can we get pre-approval on a set list of services to just really make the approval process and implementation process more, more accessible and more feasible. And then funding through in lieu of services could be a path to increase the level of sustained health-related services. And under the renewal application, we expect many of the health-related services that we've proposed to be approved as in lieu of services. And so in that sense, they're not really required under 1115 waiver authority. But there could be a few examples where CMS, the Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services, doesn't prove them as in lieu of services. And in that case, we could use the 1115 waiver authority. So that's one of the reasons we've included it in the waiver application is to give us that opportunity to kind of negotiate whether or not they belong under the Managed Care Authority or if we do need to include them under the 1115 waiver authority. Let's go to the next slide. They also, another reason they're included in the waiver is because they very much relate to the next couple of programs I'm going to highlight. They relate to the health equity program. So we are asking for waiver funding authority to make investments in health equity programs at the community level. And so these would, these would be programs and investments that are not necessarily individual services. So that's where health-related services would really apply, programs like foundational community supports. But we're really looking at what are the community investments that need to take place to really enable some of those services? So these could be organizational-level investments, these could be community-wide investments, infrastructure investments that are really important beyond thinking about those specific individual services. So really important opportunity here. And while we're highlighting this as a health equity program and an opportunity, in no way is this the, the full scope of the health equity-related investments. I think as we've talked about, all of these programs are intended and will promote health equity. But this is one more opportunity and a really critical opportunity that we see to further the, kind of the flexible funding that's necessary to make some of these upfront investments and infrastructure investments. So more work to develop some of the details of this program. And we look forward to your feedback on some ideas around how to get community involvement in the decision-making and use of these investments. We plan on there being a close partnership with accountable communities of health to administer these investments as well. Next slide, please. All right, so community hub, native hub, and community-based workforce is really about community-based care coordination. So we see an opportunity to expand our focus on the coordination that's necessary related to health-related services, related to unmet social needs, the ability to navigate beyond healthcare to community supports and sometimes even the ability to navigate and find those community supports or to get connected to healthcare providers. Not, not every individual starts with primary care. And so this is really about how do we, how do we promote the engagement and the coordination and the continuity of services, looking across community settings, community organizations, and those, those many social needs that we know exist. So in terms of some of our thinking on this, this approach, we are proposing that each ACH, so there are the nine regional ACHs, will oversee a regional community hub. And so that means they could contract with another entity at the regional level to do a lot of the implementation work. And we'll get into what does that mean? What is the implementation work? And what does the model entail? We'll get that, they get there in a minute. An ACH could actually take that work on themselves. They could be the entity that's really managing the work. And we expect that likely is the case for most ACHs. Also a native hub. So this would be to improve coordination between Indian healthcare providers and community organizations. And we are still working out, you know, how this would, this would work, but thinking a statewide native hub and would provide similar complementary services, very parallel to what I just described under the ACH model, but really focused on working with tribal members and working with Indian healthcare providers and tribes across the state. And then so hub support, community-based care coordination, I've already talked about connection to health-related services. So we see it as really, this is one investment that is going to be foundational to be successful in the implementation of those health-related services. We know there's more work to do on engaging community-based organizations. We know that there's some opportunity to invest more in capacity. We know that there's some challenges related to billing and related to information exchange and referrals. So a lot of this community-based care coordination work is going to support our other programs like the health-related services, foundational community supports, et cetera. We really think it's complementary. And this is not a replacement for clinical care coordination. So this is really meant to be supportive and complementary to clinical care coordination. Also supportive to existing programs today that offer resource navigation and referral supports. So in no way is this a replacement, but we know that there are gaps. So we want to have a way to address those gaps. And we also know that there's a need to coordinate across different programs. You know, we have community programs that maybe are struggling to stay connected with, with other programs in other communities or community-based organizations that are doing really important work, but maybe don't have all of the connectivity and the relationships across other community organizations. So trying to support those relationships and connectivity. And there is, there is a workforce component here. Community-based workforce is really essential to this community-based care coordination work. So this is an opportunity to really increase investment in community-based workforce. We use the language community-based workforce. We're not specifically using the term community health worker. Just because we want to keep it broad, we understand that there are different perspectives and different definitions depending on what terminology we use. So we say community-based workforce really to represent community health workers, peer supports, navigators, et cetera. Really those community-based individuals with lived experience with an understanding of the needs and the, and understanding of the community and, and an understanding of the culture and the experience. So there's an opportunity to increase investment, increase payment, and really work on what is, what and really work on what is, what is the sustainable payment strategy for community-based workers? Let's go to the next slide. So just quickly hub functions to identify and engage. So we know that there's more that can be done to engage individuals that maybe otherwise are experiencing unmet needs and don't have anywhere to go. And so that's where that community-based workforce is really critical. We're, we're engaging individuals at the community level in their, in their community settings and their, their circles and their experiences. We also want to increase screening for social determinants of health. So whether we're engaging somebody at the community level or supporting somebody in a primary care setting, we want to really support more consistent identification of social, social determinative health needs so that we can get them referred to the appropriate services. And we know there's a lot that goes into that. We understand that. So just, oh, this caveat out that we understand we need to work with, with all of you and community organizations. There are different screeners, social determinative health screeners in place now. We understand we need to really consider how do we do this right? And bring together some of these different processes. But, but it's important, important work. The next one here, the community network of community organizations. So I talked about that, that ties into the health-related services. If we're going to provide more referrals, we're going to provide more health-related services, we need to have those relationships. We need to have the ability to pay for and support those community-based organizations and their work. So there's a, an opportunity to build out that network through the community hubs. And then the connecting patients, connecting individuals is really about the referral process. So we want to identify needs. We want to identify available resources, have those networks in place, and then be able to refer those individuals. And then importantly, we want to know what happens. We want to follow up. Did, did they get the services that we expected them to receive when referring? And what were the outcomes? So the next slide. And then community-based workforce. So this is kind of a, an additional strategy focused on community-based workforce so that they're not be confusing. This is, this is an additional component than to what I just described on community-based workforce. And this is really specific to pediatric primary care and some legislation that was authorized, that passed to provide funding for a pilot that would provide community health workers placed in pediatric primary care clinics. So there was $2 million authorized. We have the opportunity and we're instructed to pursue federal funding, federal match on this program, which would really increase our opportunity to test this, this pilot. So increase, it would increase that $2 million to provide more funding either for additional investment in the sites or potentially other sites that could, that could also be part of the pilot. Okay, and so just quickly here, summarizing what we've just covered, because we want to go to questions. I know there's, there are some questions in the chat we'll get to and a hand up as well. So we want to get to that, but just quickly to recap, you know, we've covered a lot. There are several continuing initiatives. And so the first two there, the substances disorder and mental health IMD waivers are continuing without changes. And those are really about maximizing federal funding for these really important services and the IMD settings. And then continuing and expanding the long-term services and support programs, both the MAC and TESOA programs that are continuing, but also some of the enhancements that B spoke to under long-term services supports. And then foundational community supports. We talked about trying to get the authorization for some additional investments in, in the program and the eligibility criteria expanding. And then what I just covered under goal three is really, really new work in, in a large sense. That's the talk program. And then also the community-based workforce supports. And then continuous Medicaid enrollment for children that Michael covered. And then the postpartum services, expanding coverage and the reentry coverage after incarceration. Those are all new programs that we'll be getting. So the next slide, just have to caveat a couple of things here, just as reminders. All of these are part of our public comment process, and then they're part of our negotiations with CMS. So we, you know, have to reach agreement with CMS on, on all of these. We will reach a formal agreement with CMS at some point, and we'll have then special terms and conditions, which is our formal agreement. That doesn't mean we'll have all of the details worked out. Even with that agreement, there's more work to do. So just, just to mention that this is a, this is going to be a process to get agreement and then a process to actually implement. We'll need time for that negotiation with CMS. And then there could be some additional work. For example, when we got the authorization for the foundational community supports program originally, back in, when we got the 2017 approval of our current waiver, there was a protocol that was required that really mapped out some of the details for the program. So could have similar examples where we have agreement in principle and then have, and then have some of those additional details required before we can implement. So that's why not all programs and services, that last point there will begin the day we have authorization. And Rochelle, I think I turn it back to you now.
Yes, thank you, Chase. Next slide, please. All right, I'll run y'all through the key dates for the MTP renewal. So last year, we spent some considerable time developing the concepts and engaging with key partners. The early part of this year, we continued that partner tribal and community engagement and are continuing to refine those concepts. Right now, we're right smack, almost smack dab in the middle of our formal public comment period. It started May 12th and it goes through June 13th. And during this time, it's when we gather all the public comment. We have tribal consultation with our, with our tribal nations. And then summer through summer of this year, we'll be considering the comments that we, we, we will have received to further refine and develop our application, which we plan to submit to Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services or CMS. So that's, that's the plan between now and, and summer and, you know, where we've been last year and early part of this year. Next slide, please. All right, so now the fun part. This is hopefully why you came today. We're hoping to hear from you and, and get some great comments and questions. And we've received some already. We really appreciate, again, everyone showing up. So we've received some questions already, which we'll address in just a moment. But for those of you on the call, and it's, sometimes it's a little overwhelming to like, hey, what questions do you have for us after we've just landed a ton of information for you? So it's sometimes a little helpful to have some pointed questions that you are welcome to, to go off of. So, you know, when you hear about this renewal package, is there anything that you're excited about? Do you have anything that concerns you? Is there anything that you would want to make sure that we know moving forward? You know, what's working well now that should be preserved in the renewal? Or is there any other feedback that you have for us? So we've been, we've got a little sidebar conversation going with our presenters and with some other subject matter experts from HCA and from ALTA, kind of figuring out how to, you know, who would be best to answer. So it's going to be a little bit of a delay here as we do the coordination. So bear with me here. But let's go up to the first question. And I'm, have one screen right now, and I'm kind of juggling a couple of different things open. So bear with me while I tee that up. And I do believe that Chase is on board for answering that. But let's go up to the top here and see. And we really truly appreciate all the questions and comments. This is wonderful. All right, so the first question that we received is, you know, what are the working definitions of equity and equitable with respect to the Medicaid Transformation Project? And Chase, I know that you have some definitions and there's some information from the application draft. Would you be able to address that question?
Yeah, I figured it'd be helpful if I read the definition we included in the application, but we adopted for health equity, the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation definition. So health equity means that everyone has a fair and just opportunity to be as healthy as possible. This requires removing obstacles to health, such as poverty, discrimination, and their consequences, including powerlessness and lack of access to good jobs, with fair pay, quality education and housing, safe environment and healthcare. So we have that definition and some others in the application. But for that one, it was the, we did mirror the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation definition.
Thank you, Chase. All right, and the next question that we received, can highlights of the successes of the Medicaid Transformation Project during the current funding period be provided? And it is, let me see, we, we're not going to be able to summarize all, but I think what we can do is we can have, you know, the, the HCA team here answer. And we also have our foundational community supports team with us and ALTA to maybe share a highlight or two. So Michael or Chase or, or Michelle too, is there anything that you would like to note for the, for HCA, for some of the MTP programs?
Rochelle, this is Michael. I'll start and I really want to highlight the response to the COVID-19 pandemic. Let me turn it over to Chase if he'd like to highlight, or if Michelle would like to highlight another big one. And then, and then FCS and of course, some work that we've done with long-term services and supports has been very successful programs. But Matt and B can talk about those.
Chase, do you want to chime in here?
I would, I would highlight the accountable community of health emphasis on health equity. And, and I know there's more work to do there, but the reason I highlight that is because I think it was one of the more ambiguous goals of our current renewal. And I think we got a good start. I think AC just really elevated community voice and community organizations and have started this really important path on how do we take health equity more seriously, make some really, really critical investments. And I think that's why, you know, we're, we're kind of building upon that and focusing even more on health equity going forward.
And this is B from the long-term services and supports. You know, we have a longstanding partnership between the Department of Social and Health Services and our local area agencies on aging that are operating MAC and TESOA. We have certainly proven that a small benefit package can make a huge difference in being able to keep people at home. And we have tested presumptive eligibility when accessing MAC and TESOA. And we've proven that we can be accurate and it can result in people getting services more timely, which is why we're asking for the expansion of presumptive eligibility across all long-term care.
And this is Matt Christie jumping in for the foundational community supports program. I think some of the big highlights, just running from zero to 60 or zero to 100, whatever the expression is, in a really short period of time, we've enrolled over 24,000 individuals since 2018 and have a statewide provider network with over 450 locations. And just to add to those, some really strong outcomes for exits to homelessness, increase in wages and employment rate for those we serve.
All right, thank you, everybody. And thank you so much to Kay Jones for, for those very thoughtful questions. The next question comes from Patricia Brown on what is the child's household income? Or what if the child's household income rises above the income eligibility standard before the child's sixth birthday? Amy Dobbins, do you want to take a crack at that one?
Sure, thank you. Hi, I'm Amy Dobbins. I manage the Medicaid Eligibility Policy Section at the Healthcare Authority. So the idea here for this continuous enrollment for kids zero to six is that regardless of income changes, the child will continue to maintain their eligibility through their fifth birthday. Hopefully that answers the question there.
All right, thank you very much, Amy. And the next question came from Dennis Neal, asking, is it a state rule or federal rule to stop Medicaid when incarcerated? And thank you so much to Jason McGill, who also is another colleague here at HCA, and it, it is a federal rule. But Amy, is there anything in addition that you wanted to add? I know we had a little bit of conversation offline about this.
Sure, yeah, I, I think the distinction there is it's really about the limitation around federal financing for a person when they're incarcerated. So we're limited in what federal dollars we can use to pay for services when somebody's incarcerated. So we're looking to ask CMS to waive some of those rules so that we can leverage that funding.
All right, thank you very much, Amy. Appreciate it. All right, next question from Sarah Barker. Can you define what whole-person primary preventive and home and community-based care means? That is quite a mouthful, and we agree with you on that one. Why not just whole-person care? If you list types of whole-person care, where is behavioral health? Michael, Ernest, do you, you have any thoughts on this one?
Yeah, so the question's a really good point, Rochelle. The behavioral health, we really see as part of all three of those areas that when we say whole-person care, we are referring to physical health and primary and, and behavioral health care. And we see it in the primary care, preventive care and the home and community-based care. And in goal number two, there are, it's continuation of the two pilot programs that B was talking about, the Medicaid Alternative Care and also the Tater Supports for older adults. And also the significant policy suggestions that B and her group have for our federal partners on long-term services and supports. And also the next step for our integrated care in Washington State, which was accomplished where the coverage portion of integrated care was accomplished in the first waiver. And now we want to take on a more clinical-based integration of physical behavioral health. So I, I think the question's a very good point. I hope that clarifies it and, and where we're going under goal two. Thanks.
All right, thank you very much, Michael. Okay, let's take a look here. And we are, we are so appreciative of, of these really thoughtful, really great questions. The next question we have from Michelle. Why are you looking at paying rental assistance with ALTA folks but not under FCS? B, do you want to answer?
Sure, you know, the reason that we're doing this in long-term services and supports is that we're really limiting it, rental subsidies to individuals in institutional settings that cannot transition due to inability to pay rent. And we're proposing to CMS that where it's more cost-effective, based on the cost of long-term care plus rental assistance, than keeping somebody in institution, that they make this really giant leap in policy to be able to use Medicaid funding to pay rent in the community, which up to now has been a real prohibition on use of Medicaid dollars. So this is a start. If we can get a yes to some rental subsidies, we figure we can test it, demonstrate it, and maybe expand it down the road. And the only thing I would add to that is, you know, for FCS, the population served is largely a homeless population. And we know there's a cost to homelessness, but it's a harder cost to estimate in terms of the cost-effectiveness argument that we're trying to make to get CMS to a yes on the LTSS side.
Thank you very much, B. Matt Christie with the FCS program. Is there anything that you would like to add on to that?
Sure, thanks Rochelle and thanks B. I think that summary really explains nicely what the, I think the distinction between the two is, we are proposing the pursuit of one-time transition costs that could cover things like first and last month's rent, security deposits and application fees and maybe some basic home goods. Again, just in terms of the funding that we have for the waiver and the policies at the federal level, we are just looking at a, a one-time transitional period rather than an ongoing rental subsidy per se. And again, focused on a specific population in and out of behavioral health treatment with a history of homelessness.
Thank you very much, Matt. All right, so next up, I believe that Dennis Neal had his, has had his hand up for a bit of time. So Dennis, we're going to punt to you two to ask your question. And I, I think, um, Gabby and Sagum, do we have him unmuted on our side?
He should be able to unmute. Yes, we just requested that he unmute.
Unmute. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so I, I feel like I'm looking at the wrong document that I printed off in preparation that I printed off in preparation for this today. My document is titled Overview of the Washington Multi-Payer Primary Care Transformation Model. Was that, was there some? Do I have the right document? For this?
Yeah, I can, I can put a link in the chat for everybody. That's for a different body of work that we are doing. But I'll make sure to include, what I'll do is I'll, I'll put a link into the Medicaid Transformation Project Renewal page. And on that page, you'll have access to the full application. And it's, it's a, it's a beast of a document. It's, you know, 300 plus pages in there. And we've got some other resources that are a little more simpler and plain talk because as you can imagine, the application's pretty, pretty, pretty technical in there in some areas. So I'll make sure to provide a link there and then you can have access to all of the things on that page. And anything that we do regarding the renewal will, will be on that page.
So, so can, can, can I speak to this document about what you're doing with this? I mean, because it's part of the model or part of the, I don't know.
Yeah, we, we'll do our best to, to answer the question.
I want to say this respectively. Some people think I get like aggressive or whatever like that. But when I read Overview of Washington Multi-Payer Primary Care Transformation, and I've been a part of this since 2016, and I have a fully integrated with primary care behavioral health agency. But what happens for me as I read this document that comes out, it's primary care, primary care. And it's about behavioral health and the integration with the idea that people can have a better outcome and better experience when getting their service. And when we're servicing very marginalized, stigmatized people that are the high spenders of Medicaid dollars in that, in that agency. But what happens for me is a 36-year behavioral health person who, who has saw progress with us through the Mental Health Parity Act, the Mental Health Addictions Parity Act, and the Affordable Care Act, is, is that behavioral health and so substance abuse and mental health, we're starting to get a seat at the table. But it feels like we're still being marginalized in this process when we're talking about primary care transformation. And when you see that a lot of the people who had input into these processes didn't include us. And so I just wanted to make that, it's like, it feels like we're still being marginalized as a field that, that has a history of insurance companies getting profits and states trying to take control of healthcare costs. So, so, and throughout this paper, it's, it's that. But it talks about the integration and the importance of integrating behavioral health and how that that model can save dollars, which I totally agree with. So that, that's just what I wanted to bring up.
Thank you very much, Dennis, for, for the question and the comment. Michelle, is, is there anything that, that you can maybe speak to? Or Michael, if there's something on top of mind that you, that you'd like to share?
This is Michelle. I'll respond in it. Thank you for your comments, Dennis. The primary care payment model is in development still with the clinical team. And behavioral health, as you noted, is part of that. And we can relay your concerns about not having been part of the development conversation.
Thank you, Michelle. All right, so noting the time, we have until 1 o'clock and we want to make sure to be respectful of everyone's time. I've got a couple of slides to get through at the end. It'll, I can go through that pretty quick. I think we could probably get through a couple more questions here. So let me go up and see where we are at. And again, we are so appreciative of the comments and questions. And there's opportunities for you to continue the dialogue with us and share feedback. Okay. Let me see. Okay, next question from Mike. How do hub functions differ from or complement managed care organizations or MCOs contractual obligations? Michael, I think we had you for answering that one, correct?
Yes, Mike, the biggest difference that I would want to point out in the application is we're promoting that community-based care coordination performed by ACHs would respond to populations of emphasis such as the reentry population, where we need that strong hands-on, high-touch approach to community-based care coordination. There's more to it than that, Rochelle, but in the interest of time, I just want to point out the services that would be provided to that reentry population.
Thank you, Michael. Thank you very much. All right, next question from Kay Jones. Is the payment to healthcare providers based on the service provided or the outcome of the service? And Michael, I think we, we had you on cue for that one as well, right?
Yes, I think that in the application, we're not specifically proposing changes in how clinical healthcare providers would be paid. And the question came while Chase was talking about community health workers and the, the community-based workforce. And so I'm just to say that possibly that's where the question originated. And just to say that there is more to be designed on how we would pay that community-based workforce.
All right, thank you, Michael. Okay, I think we can probably squeeze in a couple of more questions and hang with me here. I'm looking through our offline conversation to see, to see who's answering what. So I appreciate everyone's patience. All right, and I believe Chase, you and I were chatting about you maybe being able to do a two birds, one stone kind of thing. So the next question, is there a list of the services that HCA hopes to get in lieu of services or ILOS approval from CMS? And then there was another question on ILOS or in lieu of services, set examples like housing, nutrition, transportation. Does that mean possibly assistance with housing? Chase, do you want to take it away?
Yeah, I'll be really brief. So check out Appendix A within the application. So Rochelle links to some materials. So go look at the application and look at Appendix A. It's our health-related services menu. And then, yeah, part two on that. So there is a housing and transitional care category. There's several things under there. Specific to housing, there's a, it's three different elements. Housing transition navigation services, housing tenancy and sustaining services, and then housing deposits. So look at the definitions there. Thank you.
Thank you, Chase. All right, we'll wrap this up really quick. We'll go to the next slide. All right, so we've got some alternatives here. I apologize, we were not able to get to all of the great comments and questions. I know we had some other folks that had their hands up as well. And we did see the comment about, hey, I wish we had more time for Q and A. And I, I really respect and appreciate that comment. So besides the public hearing today, there are other ways to share feedback. You can email us directly at our Medicaid Transformation inbox. We have an online survey and there's no limit on characters. So you're welcome to share your input with us via that survey. And you can snail mail us as well. So we've got the information here. And it's also posted up on the MTP renewal page. I provided the link to that. Next page. Okay, so a quick thing about some resources. So on that Medicaid Transformation Project Renewal page, we have the draft application and the appendices. We have an acronym glossary to help kind of orient you to all of the different acronyms that we have in there. And we also have some really helpful, high-level publications that is about the MTP renewal. It's a snapshot on the MTP renewal. And we also have an Evolution of Initiative One, which will be the Taking Action for Healthier Communities under the renewal, and also an FAQ. And you can sign up to receive announcements about MTP and you can receive our government delivery announcements. So that's it. Thank you so much. We went a minute over. I appreciate all of you. Next slide, please. And if, if you have any questions, please reach out to us at medicatetransformation@hca.wat.gov. Be well and thank you again for all of your comments. We appreciate your participation. Have a good one.